Mayor Pro Tim Paul, she called in earlier today and said she was not going to be able to make it, or probably would not be able to make it. Councilmember Villalobos.
Here.
Councilmember Allen.
Here.
Councilmember McClabb.
We just pulled up his second.
Councilmember Bunker.
Here.
And Mayor Deviney is present.
Here.
All right, we have a forum, so let's please stand and rise, stand and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty, thank you all for all coming tonight.
Sorry I was late, boss.
No problem. We have three public comments, if anybody wants to jump in, please fill out a form, you still got a little bit of a chance, it'll only take 10 total at night. The first one up is Ms. Sonia Villalobos.
So, I just wanted to, you know, make sure to mention this, that this must be meeting for National African American History Month 2020, and to make sure that we discuss it, talk about it, you know, and just make sure to mention it as we are at the beginning of February. So through bravery, perseverance, faith, and resolve, often in the face of incredible prejudice and hardships, African Americans have enhanced and advanced every aspect of American life. Their fight for equality, representation, and respect motivates us to continue working for a more promising, peaceful, hopeful future for every American. During National African American History Month, we honor the extraordinary contributions made by African Americans throughout the history of our republic, and we renew our commitment to liberty and justice for all. The theme of this year's observance is African Americans and the Vote, coincides with the 150th anniversary of the 15th Amendment, which gave African American men the right to vote. This amendment to the Constitution ratified in 1870 prohibits the government from denying or abridging a citizen's right to vote based on race, color, or previous condition of servitude. Today, this guarantee is enforced primarily through the Voting Rights Act of 1965 and enduring legacy of the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and the Civil Rights Movement. This year also marks the 150th anniversary of the first African American to serve in the Congress. Our great nation is strengthened and enriched by citizens of every race, religion, color, and creed. This month, we celebrate the cultural heritage, diverse contributions, and unbreakable spirit of African Americans. We commend the heroes, pioneers, and common Americans who tirelessly fought for and firmly believed in the promise of racial equality granted by our Creator, enshrined in our Constitution, and enacted into our laws. We pledge to continue to stand against the evils of bigotry, intolerance, and hatred so that we may continue in our pursuit of a more perfect union.
Next up is Ms. Rollock, Mamie.
I hate to say anything after you said all that, but this is so beautiful, and I've got something sort of silly, but something serious. My silly is, have y'all ever looked around when it's time to do the flag thing and see everybody in the middle wondering, do they do this one, or they do? I wish we could get together on which flag we saw it, and if we can't, it'll be fun to watch the people in there. Okay, and my serious thing is, we've had one real tragedy, it could have been worse, on this street recently, and there is another thing that I have been concerned about very much, and it's probably only the people that drive this street that will know what I'm talking about, but we do have some motorcycle people who take advantage of an empty street. And I know it must be fun to go as fast as you want to go, but we could have another accident as long as we allow it, and I'm just hoping that sometime we would do something about that so that we don't have another tragedy on this.
Okay, thank you Mamie. And next up is Debbie Cook, on pet registration.
I just wanted to first say, I listened to your workshop about the dog ordinance thing, so that's kind of what brings to my mind, but first I want to make sure that it's understood that I'm glad Mary Paul is doing better and she's healing, and understand that a dog ordinance is definitely a must in this community. But even watching that, some of my concerns, I guess being that we started a conversation about making an ordinance, and then we started making a thing about, okay, we're just going to have people come in and register their dogs, and that became a fee, and, you know, to me, that's like, I mean, it's more or less like a forced registration, which I get it, I mean, I have two dogs, I want to make sure that they're safe and the people that are in the neighborhood are safe, but part of that, I guess I'm just trying to be devil's advocate and look at the other side. With limited city staff, who's going to be taking care of getting everybody registered? Who's going to keep up with it? Is it, I think they talked about doing yearly, or for the lifetime with the pet, whatever, you know, is Harry going to be the one monitoring it? Is this going to be just dogs only? What about cats? If the cats practice, somebody finds somebody. So are we going to hunt down every cat in Martindale, and they have to be registered, and have shots and all that? To me, there's a cost with that, there's probably some of our citizens that may not be able to afford that, so what's going to happen? Are they going to get a ticket, which they can't pay for the pet fee, but then they're going to get a ticket, they can't pay the ticket? So, I think in making that decision, maybe it processes, instead of having a knee-jerk reaction, I'm not saying that we don't need to have a knee-jerk reaction, but not jump in, all, you know, everybody all together and say, we have to get this fixed, and I get it, we need to get it fixed, but maybe there's a stepping stone to that. First of all, it's, you know, getting the ordinance written and making sure people know, communication was one thing I heard needs to be out there, make sure people know kind of what the rule is, so they know what to do. So my concern is, you know, the payment, who's going to monitor it? Because if, you know, I get caught every single time, but my neighbor's dogs are out all the time, then I'm going to be a little hack, but I'm not even getting a ticket, but my neighbor's dogs are out all the time, it just happens to be not in here, or somebody's driving by. If I don't, if I get my dog, have a tag registered, that everybody on my neighborhood doesn't do it, then I'm going to be, you know what I'm saying, I'm just trying to play both sides of that. So, you know, maybe the registration is for dogs that we know that are aggressive, who've had incidents, get them on the books and make sure that those people are being held accountable. It seems to me that everybody's doing the right thing, are now being pushed into, not a punishment, but kind of punishment, for those who aren't doing it. So I'm just asking, maybe when you go through that process of your ordinance, that maybe we step back a little and go slowly before we start charging more money, because obviously that's a concern for your citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. And that's all we have for this evening for public comments. That brings us to the mayor's report. So with that, let's go through that. First thing I'd like to announce or tell folks about is that there's some work going on in the city to get us to identify if we can have a, be registered on the National Register of Historic Places. I see that the Historic Commission's here, and they probably have more of an idea on this, but basically, this is a process that is managed by the Texas Historic Commission. It is a, if we pass muster on the requirements and get anointed as a place on the national list of National Historic Places, commercial buildings that are within the area, that are at least 50 years old and meet some other criteria that are not too terribly stringent, will be eligible for some tax credits for any kind of renovation that they do to go off and keep that building as deemed as historic. The approval process for this includes a round of public hearings that will explain the entire process of this one. If we make it through the first quick look, there'll be some public hearings that come on to give everybody an understanding of what that means. If there's enough buildings there, we can identify a district that gets covered for the city, and it may or may not overlap with our current self-proclaimed historic district, but they'll be looking at that. And of course, once that district is in there, we get loaded into the National Register of Historic Places. And additional information can be found at a long address I gave to the council, anybody interested in going and looking that up, please give us a call at City Hall, and I'll be glad to email that out to you. Okay, let's see, we have also have got a program going, which was, it's called Caldwell County Buyout Grant, for flood-prone areas, we've talked about that in here a couple of times, it's a large grant of a million dollars that was approved by the General Land Office for Caldwell County. They have, Caldwell County Commissioners Court is managing this, or is the local director of this, they have engaged the Langford Community Management Services Company, which we've used as from the city's standpoint before, to help us with grants. And they've, that contract with Langford has completed apparently in last fall, they have, Langford has reached out to interested parties through the mail, contacting landowners to ask them already. If those of you who were watching may have seen a notice of that program in the Lockhart newspaper on 123, it was back in the notification section, so you got to look for it. And it was directing interested homeowners to contact the Langford Company, so it's not just eligible to folks that they pick, it's open to anybody that thinks that they are in flood-prone areas and are interested in potentially selling the property and getting their houses cleaned up. It's not for rebuilt houses, this is to sell the property and tear the houses down so that floods don't occur to them again. And as part of that effort, there's an outreach event that will be held on February 15 from between 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. at the library next door. The Langford folks will come over and set up a table and be able to answer questions and help people through the application process, if anybody's interested in doing that. So just want everybody to know that's going on, it's making a little progress, and we're glad of that.
What is the deadline, do you know?
Deadline.
For if somebody wants to have a buyout, is there a deadline?
Not right now.
Okay.
That I know of.
Okay, thank you.
Caldwell County Elections. We have a couple of, a bunch of elections coming up, but the first one, the primaries, and that's going to be on March 3, and they want to hold both Democratic and Republican primary elections here in City Hall. I've told, I requested that they make sure that they all, that the word goes out to the Republican and the Democratic county folks, to play nice, I don't want them getting into a fight here in City Hall. So this is going to be the kind of busy, because that's also a tax day, so if y'all were paying attention today, there was a bunch of people out here, the tax, the annual tax prep process is now going on next door at the library on Tuesdays. And so we'll have, we'll have taxes going on and elections going on all downtown, and we need to watch the parking, you know, have a parking plan for all of that. So just so you know that that's going on.
What's the date of the primary?
March 3, that's a Tuesday. All right, and then there is a public hearing concerning a wastewater permit in process supporting the HK real estate development being put in along Old Bash Drop Highway. This is not new news, but they have progressed to the point where they're having a public hearing on their wastewater treatment permit. There was some, it is at 7:00 p.m. on the 3rd, the same night as the election night, primary elections, at the Holiday Inn in San Marcos at 105 Bend 2 Drive, I'm not quite sure I know exactly where that's at, but that's the address. There have been some reports and some social media things that this is a development in Martindale, it is not, it is, it is fully in the San Marcos ETJ, however, the planned discharge route, in other words, where they spew the output of this plant, is in a drainage field that eventually gets to Martindale, in fact, it comes in right down here by the park. So interested citizens are urged to go attend if you want to, tell them what's going on with your own mind, yes, sir?
Good question, did they mention anything about what type of discharge permit they were trying for, or did that not?
It's in the permitted thing, and I believe I went and looked at it, but if I spent, I want to say it matches what the current San Marcos.
521.
Yes, I believe that's what was in there.
I hope so.
But it, the permit was available for viewing up at the San Marcos Library for several months now, and I went and looked at it, it was, it was much, it's a much more stringent level than what.
Oh, Cherryville.
Cherryville was asking for, even though Cherryville's processing is probably a higher tier processing.
Did you?
Uh, meant it, but.
Did you know if they were going to hook out to San Marcos City Sewage, or the package plant?
No, it was a package plant, what was in the permit. If they're going to go, yeah, if they were going to hook to San Marcos, they wouldn't need this.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, the last thing I have on the mayor's report is what I've termed as clarifications. We had a beating last Monday, and a lot of y'all were here, a lot of you weren't, and during that, after that, I heard a lot of inputs from citizens, et cetera, some of which I took to heart. There's a couple of things that were gone over in that meeting that I realized I probably had not done a very good job with communicating what the rules are and why we do what we do. So I want to try to straighten that out tonight. First one is this concept of ticket quotas. There were some folks that stood up and talked about, you know, one officer has more tickets than the other officers, and my God, how can this happen, et cetera. So I want to tell the public, and I want to tell specifically the council, that following ticket quotas is a violation of state law. We are not allowed to do that. The law that is involved is Title VII, subtitle I, chapter 720, section 720.002 of the Transportation Code. And I'd like to go read that to folks so they understand. A political subdivision may not establish, maintain formally or informally a plan to evaluate, promote, compensate, or discipline a peace officer according to the officer's issuance of a predetermined or specified number of any type or combination of types of traffic citations. It also says, a political subdivision or an agency may not require or suggest, even a suggestion violates this law, to a peace officer, that the peace officer is required or expected to issue a predetermined or specified number of any type or combination types of traffic citations. Now, we as a council have bounced around this, and I have failed y'all by letting people talk, thinking, okay, they'll get over this and we'll go right. But I want to assure you that in the future, you'll get a different kind of response if we bring this up at this table. A violation of this section by an elected official is misconduct and a grounds for removal from office. And so we all need to understand that at this table. Now, the citizens of this community, we can't do much about that, there's no violation associated with the citizens talking about this, et cetera. But that brings me to the second part on this. With our history in Martindale of excessive ticket citations that got us into over $600,000 debt to the comptroller, driven by, in at least in part, this concept that more tickets is better, is something that I would think the citizens of Martindale would realize is a bad thing. We shouldn't do that. And it's disappointing when we continue to see former council members and former leaders of the community who have, were in charge when we got this kind of issue, still supporting the concept that we need to go off and go do that. So, and as of course, the way our, the city's stance back 20 years ago, when we were caught with our pants down doing this, was, well, we didn't know, we were ignorant, we won't do it again. But you can only plead ignorance once, okay? And now, it is just not very smart, okay, to be going off and charging that. And thirdly, when you have a single police officer doing the job of trying to police the whole city, it is well expected that a big portion of their time should be spent patrolling, which ends up with generating citations a lot of times. However, if you go from one police officer to two police officers, common sense says you don't have to go, both of those officers aren't going to do exactly the same thing. So when people try to compare that, to me, it doesn't make any sense whatsoever, okay? We, as the city management, have the responsibility of trying to go off and do the best job we can, and if we decide that one officer, due to their schedule, due to their background, due to what they're best adept at doing for us, is to spend most of their time patrolling, that frees up other officers to go off and do other things. And they do that based off of what we ask them to go do, and when I say "we," that means "me." So don't fuss at the officers for doing what we ask them to go do. If there's somebody out there that doesn't like the way we're running things, the blame needs to come to me. So that's what I want to share with everybody in the audience and with the council as well. City employees do what they're asked to do, personal tasks on employees are inappropriate, and I don't think should be part of these meetings. Rollock. The second thing I'd like to talk to about that is the community-based policing process. Community-based policing has been around for a number of years, many years as a matter of fact. It has gotten a terrible, a much higher visibility ever since the incident in Ferguson, Missouri, and a lot of the efforts that people have pointed out over time of how to work with the police departments, and incidents where people get shot by the police, and it's all this police's fault, or it's all the individual's fault, I mean, but one of the things that you read considerably about is that it, community-based policing is a way to get the police force and the community all in sync and working together. And one of the tenets of that is communication between the police officer and the residents of the community. To get that kind of communication, they got to talk to each other. And so when I get former leaders of this community calling me up and saying, you know, some officers spend too much time politicking instead of outrightting tickets, I get a little bit out of shape. He's trying to, or they're trying to complain to me and tell me they're spending too much time talking and not enough time patrolling. What I hear is, good job, they're out doing what we want them to go do. We want everybody in this community to feel free to contact the police and not feel intimidated and not feel bad about that. So to be clear, everyone knows my stance on these, we will not entertain discussions on ticket quotas, and the city management will continue to direct the activities of all the city employees. If you don't agree with that, don't blame the police officers, don't blame city employees, they're doing what I ask them to go do, feel free to blame me. You can come talk to me anytime, I'll talk with folks. Sometimes when I get a little frustrated and I can get hot under the collar, and it shows, but I don't try to do that. But we need to go off and focus on solutions, and focus on improving things, and not just picking on them. Mr. Kent, you have a question?
Yeah, I think it's important to tie this back into the idea of that, the general structure of how, kind of say, general on municipality works. The mayor under the laws is the chief executive officer, and that's a statutory term, and underneath the mayor is the governing body, and underneath the governing body are the other municipal officers, one of those officers being the chief of police, which is a statutorily created position. The duties for that position, and the manner in which the officer completes the duties of that position, are statutorily determined separate and apart from what happens here. So it is not a position where the council, or any council throughout the state of Texas, dictates to the officer what it is that the officer is to do, but the officer derives and takes that authority from state law and T-close standards that are established by the state. And that's intentional. What it does is it separates the officer in performing the officer's duties from the political whims of the city, and binds those, binds the officer to a more strict and rigid set of standards that they must live up to. And so that discretion and autonomy that is given to an officer to live up to his professional obligations is very important to consider, and it's vested in the local government code.
All right, thank you, Kent. That brings us to the city administrative report.
All right. So, I'll go pull up a copy of this one. So as I've done for the last number of months for this fiscal year, I've organized my report along the three goals that we discussed in October. The first one, improve efficiency and effectiveness of city operations, this is largely focused on upgrade, updating the website and organizing the city staff, was unable to make a lot of headway on that this last month, just given the amount of issues we were trying to tackle between initiating the strategic planning process and some of the other things that came up. So, looking ahead, still plan to make improvements to the city website, we're developing a procedure for, in turn, to come and help the city and scan in documents and post them to the website, that's in progress. And then, at a future workshop, with no time horizon on this, we'd like to discuss the organization of city staff, possibly, in a future meeting. Going on to the next slide, slide three, goal two, implement a strategic vision and planning process for the city, this is one area where I was able to make a lot of headway with, as we had the planning workshop two weeks ago, where I presented a project plan, and then tonight, I have proposed a resolution for city council's consideration that we'll have a vote on there this evening. I also went ahead and took input, I received, and developed updated branding associated with that. So what I like to do is kind of take a straw poll, see if there's any strong objections or preferences. I have a recommendation, unless there's a strong feeling one way or another, I think we should go with that, but we'll get in there in a second. So, next steps on strategic planning, it's not only the branding materials, but also designing the outreach, coordinating with stakeholder groups, focus groups, and publishing a coming soon outreach materials online, coordinating with our local paper. So, getting into the next slides, this is what you've seen initially, and I had some feedback on that, and then I developed a number of others that I think incorporate what the feedback was, according to those. So, I'm going to flip to the next slide again there, Dwayne. So the first one, very similar to one of the original proposals, slight font change, incorporate community strategic planning as part of the graphic, I think it makes it stronger. This is, this is my preference, is number one, I think the other ones are great, this is one I prefer. Number two was based off input of, let's just go with the city steel, keep it kind of generic, that's what came up with there. The next slide. The next slide, items three and four, incorporate feedback we got from city council. I got your park on there. I'll add you people in the park. So you can see what that looks like. I think it came out, came out nice.
I like it.
But I have, I think number one's the recommendation there. On the next slide, this is my attempt to incorporate the "believe in Martindale" branding that has already been used within the city based on feedback. So, "believe in Martindale" with a little tag of "strategic plan 2025." If you believe in Martindale, imagine 2025, that was some input that we received. And then, on the next one, seven and eight, kind of staying with the theme, but not incorporating the exact "believe" font and look, but that concept, some sort of concept ideas. So, with that, if that's one of those really speak to you, I'm gonna proceed with number one. Any strong objections to that?
And who's the audience for this again?
So the audience, if I can.
You?
Because this is community-based, so for those who might not have participated in the city council workshop two weeks ago, our intention is to proceed with a strategic planning initiative that'll, through focus groups, workshops, and surveys, engage the community for feedback on things that they would like to see to focus on as strategic priorities over the next five years. It's to guide budgetary decisions and highlight areas where we can create efficiencies and what programs we offer.
And what's this gonna be used for, that program?
This is gonna be used for that program as part of the outreach materials.
I like four. You know I was gonna say that. Because you know, I'm like a broken record, I'm always a broken record. People get tired of hearing me, I talk too much, but you know, what's best than having a beautiful park on a beautiful river in Martin, and Martinville's a river town. And I like to, I like having the park there, that's kind of a vision, I think it's an excellent vision, and if we want development, guys, guys, you guys want a park? I mean, you guys are, you've got a two-story building downtown, you've got the Airbnb. I think, I think a park would be a good thing. That's just my opinion, I'm...
We run the logo.
That's the logo, that's the logo. Having the park as the logo, that's what I'm talking about, the logo. Show four again, if you don't, I don't want to take over your presentation.
No, that's fine.
A discussion, isn't it?
We've got two marketing guys right here.
I like it. What do y'all think, councilman?
I think I haven't worked myself, but this is supposed to be a report, not, it's not an agenda item where we get to vote or anything, so we were kind of getting off track with it.
Give them my input.
There you go, that's fine. That's what he asked for that, so you can...
Follow the rules here, so.
All right, so going on to goal three, slide nine, promoting opportunity to community within the city. One of the things that we discussed at that same workshop was the idea of a civic day as an opportunity to kick off the strategic planning initiative, and then the consensus and also other programs that would provide education to the community on civic services. So, I put out for the city council via email, received feedback on what we can, what other items we can include, and the feedback that I received was having a touch-a-truck event for the kids with the fire trucks, police vehicles, and other things, and then some language that we could use in part of the announcement. On the whole, most of it remained basically the same. So, with that, I reached out to local emergency services organizations, the sheriff, sheriff constable, fire department, our own police department, for, you know, participating in the touch-a-truck event, reached out to the library for possible programming and use of their computer lab for filling out the online survey, or possibly even special programming on that day, reached out to utility companies in the area, electric, water company, and others to see if they could provide information, be it flyers, or even provide somebody to man a desk or a booth to provide information to people. And then, reached out to all the city committees and boards for their awareness and the opportunity to participate in having an information booth available, and also accepting sign-ups for people who are interested in participating in any of their events, or possibly serving in the future on one of those committees or advisory boards. Also reached out to Texas State, Austin Community College, and Gary Job Corps on workforce training, continuing education programs, see if they would provide either person or information on job training and skills development that's available to the citizens in the local area. And then, also reached out to Texas Workforce, rural capital area, see if they would be able to come in and share information that they have on childcare programs, job placement programs, and other training programs that they provide. So, really trying to capture a broad swath of different, you know, civic services that are available, and make sure that people know that they're available and can take advantage of those. So, a lot of progress there, still getting feedback. Like, the target date for that civic day right now is March 7, which is about a month away, and so I'm working feverishly to try to make confirmations that they'll be available. And once I have a quorum, to use a word, of respondents that are going to be there and can commit to it, then publish information on at least who's going to be there in that sense, and then said, and possibly more. And we'll publish that through, on the website and possibly through the paper. All right, in this area, some of the other things that we're working on, want to get to establishing policy within the city for advertising non-city events or even news and developments. So, if a new business arrives, you know, how do we want to handle publishing that on our website in terms of policy so everybody has the same benefits? And we can go from there. Also coming up, planning for Fourth of July events, it's now February, that's gonna come fast. So, if the city's gonna take on a larger role in that area this year, we'll need to start planning for that, you're saying?
Our hopes, our hopes.
And that's the conclusion.
He did mention, and I didn't either, but we, the guardrail damage that over on Tina's trailer or Thompson's?
Yeah, so we, we went through quite a process to get that guardrail repaired, much longer than it should have taken. Some of the complicating factors were availability of crews to come perform the work, and some of it was the work that was required wasn't as simple as just nailing on a new piece of metal. They had to dig out and replace the posts because it wasn't done in lamest terms to code. So, it wasn't done correctly the first time, and so it took a little bit to understand what that was and get that repaired. So, good news is that repair has been done. Took a while, but we were able to get it done, and so it's there.
If I could just tell you, or just ask you, just to clarify, since the date is March 7, like the touch-a-truck, like it being family-friendly and what exactly it means?
Yeah, so the, it's kind of in the name, opportunity for kids and maybe adults to climb in a vehicle and get to experience what inside of fire trucks like and from their eyes themselves, that sort of thing. And then, I even reached out to the garbage companies, they want to provide, garbage truck, utility company, they want a utility truck. I mean, it can be, I remember as a kid, I was very fascinated by how a garbage truck just takes garbage in and crumples it all together. So you never know. So we're, it's not just the fire trucks and police cars, but that's, that's what we had in our idea.
Who gave you that, oh, somebody? I'm just kidding.
All right.
I like the horn. At least we can just go like that, and they go, "horn."
That brings us to financial report, Dwayne, what you got for us?
Also, I put my reports underneath the bottom of your stack there. Sorry to...
Well, you told us.
...steal from the bottom of that. What I did, I just nearly got this finished a little early in the month, cut it done. See our bank balances as of today, $79,000 in the general fund, and then there's the other funds you see there, street, court, police, utility. All of these accounts are reconciled as of the 31st of December. And then you see funds that are at tech school, second half of the page, the emergency fund, the Public Funds Investment Act funds, and the long-term capital improvement. So, there's all our current cash resources, as well as the balance and the fines with the state. The next page titled Profit and Loss Budget versus Actual of the General Fund. You see the first section, income, we're at 66% through the year, year-to-date. That's because you see the top line, we have 84% of the property tax revenue has come in as of the 31st, and it continues to, continues to come in. As we go down to the expense sections, we are a third of the way through the year, so 33% is your target. You see the personnel section is right at that percentage. Operating expenses are a little below, and then contracted services on the next page are well below budget as of year-to-date. You see that net income of $233,000. I'll probably need to transfer a little more cash over to our reserve fund as the property tax deadline is bringing excess funds in as we speak. The next report is Profit and Loss Budget versus Actual of the Utility Fund, and you see it's a 32% income, 32% expense, and the bottom line, net income, so the utility fund just cash flowed properly through the first third of the year. Then, my next report lists vendor payments for last month. You can scan down through there, court checks have been written over the past month. Of course, this is from the general fund, several pages worth. And then the last page of checks that have been written out of the utility.
The only thing I got a question on, Dwayne, we had, I don't, should ask you this question by itself, but the audit guys, where we're at with that? I know they've been here, we've talked to them, they ought to be getting close to wrapping up.
Yeah, they, they were here onsite on Monday for their field work, and gave them all of the documents that they asked to test and sample, and their plan is to present the report at the March meeting.
Okay, all right.
So, that's what we are working for. Otherwise, not a whole lot going on in the finance side. Other than the money, the more money's coming in than going out at the moment.
That's good. All right, that brings us to the court. Judge Tony.
Good evening, everyone.
Judge?
Got last month's report in front of you there? Everything is, all reports are current. Up to date, of course, there's a rough approximation of what I expect the quarter to be on the bottom of the first page. If, it's pretty straightforward, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to try and answer.
Any questions for the judge? One, two, one, twice. Thank you, Judge.
Right, thank you very much.
Getting more money, that's good.
Moving on to the police blotter, or police report.
If y'all have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. I will say, you probably have questions for the very last entry. That is, entry number 44. That is something we're actively working with three other agencies that occurred over 12 years ago. So, we're working with Guadalupe County, San Marcos PD as well as ourselves. So, if you don't see me waving at you driving by, I'm at one of these agencies, or I'm writing a report, or I'm conducting an interview, because this is gonna be a pretty lengthy process. Are there any other questions?
Yeah, real quick, what's the deal on that guardrail out there on Quail Run? Do you know anything about that?
That'll be on the next blotter, that was gentleman that, he went to the Great Bar Hotel on Friday night. For a DWI.
I know we can't do anything about it, but is there any, I mean, is there any way, I mean, I know it's Tex Dock, but put a turn lane there, it's such a dangerous intersection, but I know we don't have any control of that.
We had Tex Dock in Caldwell County out right after the holidays, right before the holidays, and I took them down there and showed them the issue. It's not in the current plans for that, and so we're kind of years away from being able to do something specific with that, but there was a little hope, he said, because there is some money that, projects that they have to go, that they have to work on drainage-related issues. And so, as you know, there's a covert that runs under right there and feeds that creek, or that ditch that runs by Quail Run for water on the other side. And so, they told me and Ed, Ed Therry was there with us, that one of the things they can do is if they can get that project to be a drainage project, to improve that covert and that ditch around there, they could run widening the embankment along there that might help the situation a little bit. My request to them was, let's move Quail Run, they've got the connector down to where Skull Road runs straight to 80, get it away from the curb, and get it to where you could, you know, get the traffic that goes through there and all of that, just dead end Quail Run then and just use it as a city.
That's gonna be a head-on right there one day.
But, well, there's already been two fatalities that I personally know of, and I'm sure I've missed some, so we increased that, but with Tex Docks, you gotta get in the pipe and they got, I mean, they work on things this year that they planned three years ago, so it's a case of, we gotta, we gotta keep the heat on them and try to get something with that.
Would it help to maybe have citizens of Martindale to call Tex Dock?
Wouldn't hurt, wouldn't hurt a thing.
Because, you know, we all drive that, I use that road all the time, I know you do, and it's so dangerous. I'm not an expert, but man, those gravel trucks and everybody's passing that stripe, there's gonna be a head on right there, because they all come in, and it really needs to be a turn lane, but again, that's not our department, but I guess it would be good for citizens to call and complain.
Wouldn't hurt.
That'd help, okay.
Any other?
That's it for me.
All right, boards of commission, we have the historic commission here tonight, I see, so here's Craig.
All right. Maybe earlier you mentioned about the Martindale being potentially designated, at least a certain area, as a national historic place or on the National Historic Register, and I just wanted to kind of add to that. The good thing about something like that, number one, it brings notoriety to the city and gives us a little more credibility based on our rich history. Number two, it offers people that have commercial buildings within that district up to 20% tax credit, and it's not even a tax abatement, it's like off the bottom line of your taxes. So, especially if you're doing any kind of renovations and improvements. So I think it could be a great thing for the city. It's being partially driven by Maury and working with the historical commission, and we've had a couple meetings so far. I believe the Texas Historical Mission's gonna be here tomorrow to tour the city and walk around and kind of get their hands on it. It's a fairly long process, it could take up to a year, so we'll just keep you guys updated, but we'll let you know if you have any questions about that. Okay, the next thing, I just wanted to let people know, we recently approved with modifications a sign for the Martindale Water Supply Company. They haven't had a sign ever, and they'd like one, and so they come up, came up with a couple of ideas, and we kind of went back and forth. a couple ideas, and we kind of went back and forth, and gave them some direction on how to approve, and they're going to come back again with the final design before they move forward with getting a signed permit. So that's in process. And I also wanted to mention, we're currently accepting applications for a committee member on the commission. We, I wanted to also mention that there was some confusion amongst a few people about, you know, how does the process actually get kicked off? Does the commission recommend someone? Does the city recommend someone? And after a lot of different conversations with various people, and looking back at past precedent, and talking with committee members, the commission feels more comfortable if we just give you guys the applications, and you review them, and vote only yourselves. Versus, and that's the way it's always been done. Versus the commission, I don't want to say playing favorites, but we might have an idea about who, someone might like someone, and someone else might like someone else, and people might lobby for, you know, and ultimately we come up with a name, and it's, who knows how transparent that process is. It just becomes very difficult for the commission. So we feel like you guys could be a lot more objective about that than the commission, and that's what we're going to do moving forward.
I agree, that is the way it has been.
Yeah, that's the way it has been. So I just want to clarify that that's the way it's going to be moving forward.
You have two applications that I know of right now.
That is correct.
And our plan is to do this at the March 10th meeting.
That's exactly right, so you guys will review it for the next meeting. That's all I got.
And would it, would it be appropriate for that to be on our website, stating that applications are being currently-
Yeah, sure, yeah, absolutely. Applications are being accepted for-
I think the application is on there.
I think it may be printed.
But I don't think it's in like a form where they can fill it out.
Right, right.
We might go to Craig and go real quick.
Yeah. Or even just call.
Yeah. And if it can't be done, maybe we put a note saying, you know, please, keep Sylvia or like that.
Okay, Craig, thank you. That brings us to the Parks Commission.
Yes.
Advisory Board.
Thank you, Mayor, fellow city council, or city council members. We had a volunteer day this past Saturday, so the volunteers finished installing the plastic-coated cable through the telephone pole barriers in the parking lot, and around the front of the park near the porta potty and the entrance to the park. So if you go to the park, you'll notice a thicker, yellow, plastic-coated cable that has been replaced throughout the whole park. So I'm glad we finished that. We also installed a new metal valve box in, over the water valve, because the one before the lid had broke, so we installed that. We also cleaned all the signs, which is nice, we cleaned all of those, and then we started to tighten the bolts on the swings, but then Simpson and I realized that the man that installed the playground advised us onsite there, and said that we need to replace the swings. Two swings have been purchased, and that would be the seat-
They haven't been purchased yet.
They, they are in the process of being purchased. We have received the amount of money it's going to cost to purchase the new swings themselves, the chains and the attachments to the poles. We have the cost for the swings and the shipping. Susan Smith will submit that to the mayor.
Sam, along those lines. I don't want to do it tonight, but, but it'd be good to get, capture, if these things got a life to them, and it sounds like they do, capture a preventative maintenance process, or timing or something in that. So come by and let's talk about that at some point. Or we could do that Thursday night, let's talk about it Thursday.
Those may very well be the original swings that were in there in 2007, so they have lasted 13 years.
If this guy looks at them and says they've got to be replaced, there's some, there's some kind of criteria that's driving him to do that. It may just be age, I mean, it may just be time, but-
I think the seat parts were sort of rotten out, and so that's, that's why we decided to replace those.
Okay.
I want to thank the city council, or the city for, in the sewer bill, and the garbage bill, mentioning about the volunteer day. We had one previous city council member, Sergio Gómez, showed up, and so that, that was very nice, we got one more volunteer. We started painting the tops of some of the telephone poles, the short poles, white. Actually, we just painted two of them, and we painted the gate white. So we did that, we did some trimming on some trees and the bushes also. I want to thank Sean McDonnell in particular, on the Parks Advisory Committee, for purchasing hardware and bolts, and we used his tools and his knowledge. So I really must commend Sean on his work on that. Also Jeff Latimer, that's on the committee as well, has picked up all the garbage on Highway 80 between Skyview and Hobson Ranch. If you notice, it's all cleaned out, and so he's, he does all the picking up of the garbage at the park, but he has also taken that on. As the mayor mentioned, we will have a Parks Advisory Committee meeting this coming Thursday at 6:00 PM. We're going to talk about more signage that we need. We're also going to install two more new telephone poles at the entrance, so people can't drive in through that side of the park, of the parking lot. We're going to talk about some electrical problems with the plugs and the lights. We have been talking a little bit about the infrastructure of the Phase 1 park, and what we'd like to see there, how many picnic tables, how many parking spaces or whatever, so we will be talking with that. I have been talking with Ash and Associates, a surveyor in San Marcos. They have come up with a preliminary map of the local, I mean, of the properties of the private landowners. Here's 1979 and the river, and so we're finally coming to an idea of who has these deeds, where are they? And so we're talking about Phase 1, getting the survey done on Phase 1, and we're actually going to be receiving bids from three different survey companies, maybe Google, and he has done some surveying for the city, but we need to get three separate bids for that in order to start the work on the Phase 1 of the park, which will be land clearing, cutting down old trees, and beautifying that part of the park. And I'd like to maybe have a volunteer day soon at the post office. I think the post office looks really bad, the landscaping is all dead, so I'd like to see us maybe clean up the landscaping, maybe working in conjunction with the post office, and just purchasing a few plants for the post office. Can anyone have any questions about the parks?
They'll be here next week, Craig. Any questions?
Any, any questions?
No, no, I'm sorry. We were all working on-
Mayor, I had a question, like, he was saying that the Parks Department wanted to have a day to beautify the post office and buy plants. As a city, can we, can we do that with our, with a committee, a Parks Committee?
City funds?
It's private property.
Yeah.
It's private property. I mean, if it's something that people want to do on their own, and they work out with the landowner to do it-
Volunteer thing of a volunteer, maybe just cleaning it up and putting a few plants in there or something, just, just something to make it look a little more presentable.
We also have Earth Day that's going to be coming up, and with Keep Texas Beautiful, like, if the city is registered on there, like, I just did it as a community, community member, and they send you like free garbage bags, gloves, they do everything. You just have to register online with them for Keep Texas Beautiful, and then they put your cleanup day on their website. So that's always good for Earth Day, and like as a, you know, doing it as a park or whatever, you could do different areas within the whole community.
Okay, perfect.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the report.
Thank you, Sam.
Could I ask, could I ask a favor, since Joy's not here? Could I speak real quick about this discharge permit, real quick?
Well, let's get to them first, but we're going to go to planning and zoning next, and then Joy's there.
So as of last month, I did not necessarily have a report, or much of a voice. I'm trying really hard today. It's going to get better, I promise. The first thing that I would like to let the other council members, as well as the public, be aware of, and we had some questions, seems like a meeting two ago, in regards to the project that came to the City 4 review, that was called Summer Breeze, which was to be on Highway 80. And so what I'd like to do is read an email that came from the representative of the developer. And it says, "Good afternoon, Lisa, I'd like to update the city, by the way, of email, as to the status of the Summer Breeze Texas project. Please find the email below that explains why we are no longer pursuing this project. You have been very helpful in guiding us through this process with the city. I sincerely appreciate all of your help and efforts thus far. Please pass along my gesture of thanks and appreciation to the city's mayor and other council members for their time, support, and patience through this process. Again, many thanks to all involved. Tried to bring a very unique project to the city, however, after extensive engineering research and dollars spent, found the site to be infeasible." So I know that's been kind of a lingering question for, for many, and so I wanted to just address that. The other thing is just to, just to let folks know what actually goes on and kind of comes into my inbox, anything from, I got a phone call and a complaint because I tried to reinforce my fence from dogs getting in or dogs getting out, and because I'm in the scenic corridor, I don't know what to do about it. So I spend time helping those folks, and really it's education, just letting them know what the, what our code of ordinances looks like, how they can access it directly for themselves online. We've had inquiries in the last month about developing, many inquiries about the property that is on the river, two properties that are for sale. And so people will call or email or above, and they just want to know, you know, I'm looking at it, I'm considering purchasing it, but I want to know what I can do with it before I do. And so, again, all I can do is really guide them to the code of ordinances, for them to have a better understanding of what is and is not eligible to happen in those locations. I've had inquiries about permits for fences, and I want to, and even though that's really kind of not what P&amp;Z does, but that particular one came to me for the fact that the resident wasn't sure what he needed to do. And I just want to commend, because, you know, in years past, there have been so many situations where it was kind of, don't talk about it, just do it, and hope that nobody says anything. And what I'm seeing now is more of a trend of, hey, I want to do, I want to build a little, you know, lean-to, or I want to put a little guest house on my back, and what do I need to go through the process? And so that makes us here at the city have more to do and be busier, but what that really means is that, number one, we've got more people, and we've got more people that are kind of getting with it, and on board, and understanding that there is a process, and so I'm glad to hear about that. And then, like I said, just a lot of inquiries about river property, so if there's any questions or anything, yes.
Oh, on that Summer Breeze, did they get Pacific wide? They left, they gave, was it a floodplain issue, was it a water issue?
So, so without, don't quote me, because I don't have the specifics in my, in my, in front of me, basically that property, about 12, that property was 168 acres. In surrounding and up in the topography, about 1,200 acres, literally watersheds to that property.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So they spent a lot of money and extensive engineering to determine how much dirt they would have to move. I mean, they already knew they were going to have to have some retention, I mean, you just have to whenever you develop anything, but it became cost prohibitive.
Have we heard anything about, no, I haven't heard anything, have you guys heard anything, or Mayor, about the, I guess we asked our engineer about the new advisory, Matt, so they've been adopted by Caldwell County, as far as you know?
Uh, I don't think even the state has adopted it yet.
No, no, Matthew over at Caldwell County CAD has updated the, to the 2019, the February 2019 preliminary maps, FEMA maps, okay. He brought, brought that over earlier last year, and updated all of that, and so those are what we're using now when, when somebody comes in and says, where's the flood, you know, my property in the floodplain or in the floodway or whatever, we, you know, that's what we pull up and look at.
Was it, I mean, I know, I've talked to floodplain ministry before, and this is what, six months ago?
From a standpoint of an insurance, the insurance world, which of course is FEMA-driven, I don't know that they've triggered those yet, but-
The new, the what?
I heard marked, they were going to-
Yeah, it's coming. I think they may have to do them for a year, leave them out there as preliminary for a year or something.
Because I'm hearing rumor, you know, I walk over at the San Marcos River Ranch, a lot of, a lot of building going on, a lot of people are building, I've heard rumor because they want to be under the 2012 floodplain, not the 2015.
And those folks are going to have to come-
Our advisory.
Have to come through, through our office here, and through our city units.
Would you mind if I talk a little bit about that permit? If, that's because there's nobody here from the river advisory, this is a river issue.
I just have one question for Lisa, as in regards to the fence. So what, how was the fence issue resolved?
Okay, thank you for asking. Basically, the situation was a property owner has a vacant lot, and he has a home-based business that has some equipment, and he was wanting to, and basically, so there's no fence on the property at all, so he's been, so he's storing his equipment, say a tractor, okay? And so he wanted to be able to put a fence up. So in the city, anywhere you are, if you put up a fence, you are supposed to apply for a fence permit, which has nothing to do with me. But it got kicked over to P&amp;Z because of the notion of it being, in a sense, a home-based business, and would this be commercial? You know, did he need to apply for a either specific use permit or a potential zoning change? So I went over in detail with him, looking at the actual parcel number, explaining that it's not a good idea, or, you know, what's called spot zoning. So if you've got this much that is all residential, and your property's right in the middle, and you want your property to be commercial, it would not be recommended by, by anyone from an engineering perspective and/or just a planning perspective to put a commercial right there. So, so for that reason, you know, we do have the ability, according to our ordinance, it is permitted for you to have a home-based business. Now, what that home-based, a home-based business is not a business that has foot traffic. You know, it's like your office. So what happens, so what happens if your office is a barn? What's the difference? So anyway, so I just went through the whole process and sort of talked through what it would look like, explained, he even said, you know, should I apply for a variance? And so I said, really glad you asked. Let me explain what a variance is. A variance is not for that purpose. A variance is if you want to build a building or a house or something on a pre-existing lot, and the lot is too small, and so therefore you're not able to meet the requirements or setbacks on the front of the property or the back of the property or the sides. And because you don't meet the requirements of the actual footprint of the land to build the building, then you would apply for a variance, and it would be probably granted, because you can't change the land. It's almost like a handicap, you can't change it. And so he understood that part as well. So I just advised that, based on what our ordinance and all of our regulations state, it looked to me like you just need a fence, so-
I think we better go, go review that in the Planning and Zoning Commission, because I don't agree with that.
Really?
And so-
And see, so that's what I was wondering, because like, if there's a property within the city limits, it's zoned, either whatever area it's in, it should be very, very clear. Like, either it's going to be a fence, or it's, or you can't do it.
Well, this is kind of a special case that she's talking about, and the proper place to talk about that is the planning and zoning thing. So let's hold off and go do that. But that's, that's a typical, I mean, that's a good example of the kind of things that the planning and zoning folks, and Lisa has shouldered this along the way, face all the time. And these are not easy questions, and this, this is kind of a special case, but we need to, we need to have a, it's not, not going to be the only time that comes around, and that particular issue has cropped up, and then we've also recently, just this week and last week, got a couple of people coming, calling, realtors calling for questions on plots that are currently in R1 zones, but they are not looking to put R1 kind of stuff in there. And, and so-
And I get those calls, too.
So, so there's some-
And I was, I was actually, you know-
We need, we need to tighten up our zoning rules, make sure we all understand what that is.
That whenever we- That whenever we do, just that we need to make sure we're disseminating the same information all together.
Well, and all I can do is literally take the resident, or the realtor, or whomever, to our code of ordinance, to our table of use, and say, "If you're in this one, da-da-da-da-da, it's either permitted or it's not." So, that's, that's all I can do, and that is what I do, so.
Okay. Anything else?
Other than I do foresee that sometime in February, we need to have a P&amp;Z meeting. And so, I know at the end of the meeting, when we do future agenda items, or we can talk about it then.
We'll get it there.
All right. I'll keep it real short.
Please do, but go ahead, Mike.
Folks, I just want to let you know about this, what Mr. Devini talked about, the discharge permit at Holiday Inn. This is extremely important. Just to let you know, give you a little detail, that particular property is going to be a lot of homes, and what I'm hearing is going to be a package plant, and they're going to dump into Coyote Creek. And Coyote Creek basically beanders along, and it dumps right across from our river banks. So, if anybody here, and tell your neighbors, if anybody's here concerned about the water quality on that river, they need to come. And also, I think if it's a 5-5-2-1, like you said, not a problem, because that's what we have in San Marcos. If it's not, like Cherryville, I think we need to be a part of the contested, if they do, I'll probably go to a contested case, and I think we need to be a party if they don't go with a 5-5-2-1. Because that creek basically is somewhat dry most of the time, so you've got kids swimming literally 20 yards upstream from that park, and it could be really, really nasty. So, I'd recommend anybody who uses this river in town, go to the Holiday Inn and listen, see what's going on. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, moving on to consent items. We've got a set of minutes and the accounts payable stuff, and the minutes are quite lengthy.
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes for January 7th, and the accounts payable as presented.
And the 21st.
And the 21st.
All right, anybody want to have a discussion? We have a motion this second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 4-0. All right, moving right along. We are now to discussion possible action items. First thing on there, item number 12, is resolution announcing the strategic plan. And it's in here somewhere. Jared, I'll let you go announce that.
Yeah, so this resolution is based off of the discussion that we had on the 21st workshop, January 21st workshop, and lays out those points that we discussed at that meeting. And the resolution states, now with the recitals, now therefore resolved, City of Martindale will undertake community-based strategic planning initiative to identify the most important community priorities and initiatives to guide future budgetary decisions. And so, that's, I'm putting that forward for the council's consideration as a part of kicking off the process.
Let's read everything. It's not up there, so if people can't see it today, but this is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Martindale, Texas, supporting efforts to initiate a community-based strategic planning process and declaring an effective date. Whereas Martindale is committed to supporting practices that maximize citizen involvement in shaping the future of the city. Whereas strategic planning supports the alignment of programs with citizens' expectations, promotes public accountability and transparency, provides a foundational blueprint for community goals and initiatives, and serves as the basis for future budgetary considerations and decisions. And whereas the benefits of community engagement during the planning process includes eliciting the best ideas and most constructive feedback from residents through collective efforts educating the public and promoting a sense of citizen ownership of the strategic plan. Now therefore be it resolved that City of Martindale will undertake a community-based strategic planning initiative to identify the most important community priorities and initiatives to guide the future budgetary decisions. So, that's what we're doing. As Jared said, it's kind of what we went, he went through with his presentation, meeting of two or three ago, or whatever it was.
I would like to make a motion that we pass Resolution 2020-02-04, the resolution of the City Council of the City of Martindale, Texas, supporting efforts to initiate a community-based strategic planning process and declaring an effective date.
I'll second it.
All right, all in, any discussion? Anybody got, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes 4-0. Thank y'all. All right. I can't sign, I don't read this, I've got to make the color, I guess. All right, the next up is the calling orders for the May 2nd, 2020 general elections. So, the first one that needs to go is the, is the ordinance number 2020-2-04. It's three pages. Basically, I'm not going to read this whole thing because it's got a lot of boilerplate in it, but it basically says that places 1, 3, and 4 up for two-year terms coming this May, that we have going to run the election through the county election offices. So, Pam Olendorf, our collection administrator for the county, has signed up to go off and go do this for us. And it talks about what days the election, early elections are, and when the mail-in ballots, I think, is in here, too, right Sylvia?
Yes, sir.
Are available, and it's time to go off and go do that. So, do I have a motion for the council position ordinance here? Or any questions?
Is this, is this separate?
That'll be next, yeah.
Okay. Can I make a motion that we accept as presented, the action to call the May 2nd, 2020 general election as you presented?
Second it.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 4-0. That's Sonia and Lisa. Okay. Now, there is another one in here that has to do with our disannexation petitions. We received another petition from the folks out in Hobbs and Ranch Estates and Butterfly Meadows. We have gone through and screened the names. There's more than 50, the required 50 signatures that are fully compliant, and therefore, unless you have seen anything in the wording, we have no objections to the wording. So, with that, we are deeming that that is a compliant petition that meets the requirements of the law. And I don't know that we have, we don't have to vote on this one, this is just an order from me. So, just so that the council knows that we are, I'm going to sign this order to go have that as part of the election in May as well.
On the ballot?
It'll be on the ballot. And we need to send a letter to those folks that got all the perfect stuff in there, I assure you. All right, I think that's all the election stuff.
Can I have a question? Sylvia, Precinct 302, can they usually have that over at Maxwell?
No.
Not this, it will be here?
It will be here.
Okay.
The election in May is going to be comprised of city elections, which is why it's here, and San Marcos Independent School District. So, they extend into Precinct 301 and 302, all of Caldwell County Precinct 3 gets some of that. So, they're going to have that as part of that same thing. But the ballots will be very, the ballots are going to be tricky. We've got to be careful of the ballots. We're working on that, we're aware of that. We don't want another bull again, okay? So, we're reviewing that. But that's why it's here as opposed to up there, because there's no county elections. It's San Marcos and just us.
Okay.
Okay. Item 14, discussion action on modifications to the solid waste ordinance. So, tell me that's in here somewhere.
I'm not sure if it was. Yep. I don't see it.
Okay. All right, that's Bureau Veritas.
Oh, it is?
That's Bureau Veritas, okay.
That's one of them looking at them?
Oh, the solid waste.
We sent it out as part of the makeup. Let's, what I'd like to do is, Dwayne, could you, Sylvia, could you go print that out right quick?
It's electronic.
Yeah, we got it electronic.
Downloads, you can probably put it up.
Look, let's see if it's on there.
Yeah, I'll see if I can print it out in the meantime.
Okay, that'll work, that's right. And in the meantime, let's move on to, I'd like to move on to Agenda Item 15, which is the Bureau Veritas contract while we're getting our act together on this other one, and then we'll come back to that. It's okay. Everybody agree with that? All right, that'll move on to Bureau Veritas. The situation with Bureau Veritas is, or our situation that we have, is we've used Bureau Veritas as our inspection folks for years. The old contract was signed by Les Harrison back, I think, in 2007 was the one we turned up in there. The contract that you're looking at that we sent out is basically a boilerplate agreement that does this. The reason there's a need for change is this. In the past, they had not been, we either not utilized them, I don't know how that happened, but we hadn't been utilizing them for fire inspections. Typically, in residential homes, it's not a big deal. Commercial businesses do need to have a fire inspection done prior to occupancy being And that always has to happen right at the end, after they got everything in there. So, typically, what happens is, is that they're ready to open, and they go, "Oh, my gosh, we have to have a fire inspection." Our instructions had been to, when they came in for permits, that owners had to go contact a fire marshal and get an inspection done on their own, and bring us the past inspection. So, if you can imagine, they wait to the last minute, "Now, where's my fire marshal?" They start calling around, they don't get answers, they've got schedules, da-da-da-da-da, they're not quite as responsive as Bureau Veritas. And this has caused delays in some of the commercial businesses over the last couple of years that we've had here. So, we ran into one of those situations here just recently, and in working with Bureau Veritas, we found out that they do have registered fire marshals that could come do inspections, and they still would do it in the kind of timely manner that they do other inspections. But it wasn't in our original contract, we need to have a contract modification, so that's what this is all about, is to allow us to go utilize that. Attachment B, for all of you council members that are in the back, that's the crux of this matter. Here is, you see the rates for their plan reviews and their fire code inspection services. And so, as we get more and more commercial businesses coming in, asking for this, we felt like, I feel like, the city feels like, city staff feels like this is a good thing to go off and go do. And so, I'm asking tonight, give me authority to sign this, and let us carry on with what we've got planned. And Ken, I don't know if you've had a time to go through this line by line, it put me to sleep twice.
Just a few, quick question.
There's a couple of minor things.
Quick question? You said "commercial" earlier, and it says, it says "single-family resident fire services."
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
For that also.
Huh? That's going to be for residential also?
Residential.
Or is it?
But, oh, I thought you were...
Because I thought it was coming.
So, basically, we're just, you're just reviewing it, or you're looking...
I want to renew it, but I want to put attachment B as part of it, that's the big thing. We're adding attachment B to what we have.
To part, to the contract.
To the contract.
The fee schedule.
Go, go, go. I think it's critical.
I just, I guess, I was confused, because he said something about "commercial only."
I don't know that we do. I mean, they happen, and I just didn't know it on residential stuff.
I mean, it may be part of what they do that we don't know anything to do with.
Well, they're not supposed to.
I would like to make a motion that we accept the update to the contract, the Bureau Veritas contract with attachment B. My second.
Can we discuss this a little bit?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm still, we had, I can understand "commercial," but are we going to put burden on the, on a resident or a single-family resident?
Well, I understand that this is a service.
It's already there, it's standard.
But this is a service for them.
What I'm saying, I'm still a little confused, because it says "commercial only," and then I'll see "single-family resident fire service."
Okay, so, on our agenda, it says "discussion and action concerning an update to the Bureau Veritas contract, period." Doesn't indicate commercial or residential. He stated that he was concerned in regards to some of the commercial situations that we've had. So, where it says at the top...
I'm looking at attachment B, that's what I'm looking at.
As am I, as am I. About "single-family," that's in the code already. He's just lining it, line item in the house. You're going to build a house, you're going to have one.
Just what Bureau Veritas charges to have these done.
It's already...
Yes. And we offer them the service so that it can be done quickly.
I'm just getting clarification.
They can still go somewhere else.
What this actually does is...
They can.
Is it keeps the office in the know about when a resident comes in, these are the inspections that you're going to have to have, this is what our third-party inspection company charges for it. To me, this is just the cheat sheet, which I think is good.
Thanks for that clarification, that's all.
Do you have a first and a second?
All right, yep, we got a first, we got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank y'all, that'll help, that'll help. Now, if you look at the thing that we've just handed out, thank you, Jared, for doing this. The last we left our heroes in December, we had talked about ordinance, ordinance update to the solid waste ordinance, and it was along the lines of three sections that needed, we wanted to better define short-term rentals, we wanted to add a deposit requirement and a process for returning the deposits for customers in good standing, and we wanted to add a process to allow non-property owners to be the customer of record. So, when you look at the first page of this, it's all the reasons we were trying to go off and go make these changes. And then, on page two, we have the Section 51.01 changes that we're going from, the "from" statement is what is currently in the ordinance, the "to" statement is what we're suggesting to go to as part of this. And this is the definition sections, and it basically talks about that a, we're going to add the term "short-term rental" in there, so everybody knows that that is included as part of a residential, can be included as part of a residential unit. And we're trying to clarify the fact that you could have up to four different apartments slash rooms for rent for whatever on a piece of property and still be considered a single residential unit as far as the solid waste requirements from the city are concerned. In other words, you theoretically could have three little condos or three little hutches that you're renting out on the weekend, and all run out of one set of 96-gallon trash cars, okay? As opposed to saying every physical structure has to have its own trash... physical structure has to have its own trash cart or whatever. And that's, I mean, it's, made sense to us back then, and it still does. That's fifty-one point oh one. The changes to fifty-one point oh two, which is on the next page, is the addition of requirements for deposits for solid waste accounts. We had recognized that the only deposit requirements that were called out in the ordinances were for the wastewater treat stuff. There was not any in the solid waste ordinance. However, we did talk in the ordinance about how we got to use those deposits. So, it was kind of out of whack with it. So, we put in new verbiage that requires the deposit, defines the amount, say how we'll use it, et cetera, and also talks about how you get it back whenever you either terminate service and/or achieve twenty-four months of good, consecutive months of on-time payments. We'd look, remember, and talked about other cities that did this and handled it this way, settled on the twenty-four month, et cetera. It specifies the request form, which you'll see on the next page, to say, I want my money back. And of course, it specifies that when you do that, it actually just goes as a credit to your bill as opposed to actually cutting a check or whatever. This helps the city manage our utility deposit account because instead of just holding on to them until people terminate, either by leaving the city or passing away, we don't have to keep track of that money and keep it just for keepsakes. So, we're recommending that one as well. And then, the third piece of that change, this change, which is fifty-one point oh three, we will, this, we, it actually, the current ordinance allowed for tenants and renters to be the customer of record, but it didn't provide a method for us to track that really well, and it was confusing to the staff. So, what we did is, we said, we would use a form, again, that the owner of the property, who is the ultimate responsibility to the city, because that's how, I mean, renters can come in, rent, and then disappear one night, and, you know, leave the city hanging or whatever. So, this form allows us to, allows the owner to delegate the responsibility for payment to the rentor, who will then pay us, and they'll get the bills, et cetera, with the understanding that if they bolt, the owner of the property is the one that is ultimately responsible if there's a leftover about, and the liens will be applied to the property or whatever. And this was copied of some other utility organizations that are doing it that way. It seemed to like that. This helps the owners because they'd like, they'd like to be able to just find a renter and say, okay, you take this, you just send me my money every month, and then I'll, I won't worry about this. If we, the way we had been processing these meant they had to get involved on a monthly basis and either increase the rent so they could pay for that, then write us a check and do all that. Got them involved, and this is a better answer for the owners and the renters, leases, or whatever as well. So, that's what these changes are. Carl, can you have a question?
Somebody who's been burned before, if the water company does not also do this, then there is no remedy.
I understand, but the water company does this.
They do the same.
That's who we copied it after.
They didn't in my experience.
Which part? Meaning that they did or didn't do what?
For tenants or for...
Well, they didn't take any action when I had a tenant who wasn't paying your bills. And so, I was on the...
See me about this, and I'll be glad to walk you through. But when I said we copied another utilities company's form, that's whose form I copied was the water company's. So, I'd be surprised. Somehow, we're disconnecting on one of these. All right. So, with that, any questions from the council on what's going on?
Dwayne, could you go back up to the fifty-one point oh two and Item six, deposit receipts? Right there. Says, "A record of unclaimed deposits will be maintained by the city for four years." Then, what happens to the money?
We're required, if you remember looking in some newspapers or whatever, and there's a webpage that the state uses that lists unclaimed deposits. And so, we're required, if we have a deposit for past four years and nobody claimed, we are required to notify the state and probably send them the money, but I don't, I...
So, that's when you go to that website, and it says "unclaimed property," and...
Yeah, you look up your name and say...
And you buy, oh, I got twenty dollars and fifty cents.
That's where it comes from, is all these kind of things that are going on.
Right, okay. That's all I wanted to know.
Okay, so, that, any other questions? Do we have a motion to...
No.
There's a lot of these that are, are we separating, are we gonna vote separately or individual?
We're voting them all, on the whole thing.
I make a motion that we approve the ordinance of the City Council, the City of Markdale, amending sections fifty-one point zero one, fifty-one point zero two, fifty-one point zero three of the Code of Ordinance to revise the definitions of residential service, add provisions to collect deposits, and a process to return those deposits, and updates to the definition and process for who is a customer of record. A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I'll have some discussion just for a moment.
Okay.
I'm not gonna throw a cog in the wheel, but I do want it to be, to be known that I am not in favor of, when you have rental property, of the owner being responsible for the tenant's bill. I just want that to be on record. Carry on that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. All right, that brings us to Section nine, executive session. So, if I could ask the folks to get out. Time is... All right, I have restarted our recordings. The regular session of the Markdale City Council is reconvening after executive session at eight fifty-two. And the item on the agenda is to let the public know what we did. Basically, on the ETJ agreement with the San Marcos, we brought the council up to speed on what the current steps are going through, but there was no action taken. It was just information sharing. On Item nineteen, discussion possible action on status of physical security issue at City Hall. There, I want to tell the public that there was a breach of physical security at City Hall in August of twenty nineteen, specifically in the city slash police department's secure lockup. Due to the nature of the incident, the county district attorney's office was requested by the city to conduct an investigation. Their investigation has concluded without determining the location of the missing items. The city has identified appropriate actions to improve our operations. Some are already complete, others are still in progress, and the executive session Agenda Item was to notify the council, which has been done. There are no council decisions or actions that are required. With that, that gets us to future items. So, the next scheduled regular session is on three and ten. It's not on our three and three date because that's the election night, and the place will be busy with that. So, we had discussed quite a bit ago. So, the next regular session is on three and ten. We have, we could have the middle of February session, which I heard two things that we really ought to go put in there. One of them is the planning and zoning meeting is necessary, although we don't have specific Agenda Items yet. And if you wait till the last minute, there's not gonna be any, so...
No. And I would, and actually, I would, I would like to, I would like to, based on some of the things we talked about earlier, I'd like to actually have even just like a P and Z workshop, you know, have a, have a time where I can, where it's publicized, where residents can ask questions and have a better understanding of how to read the code as well as our council members, and to kind of, kind of do a meeting of the minds. I would like to do that.
Would you want to use it as an opportunity to review the code as it exists and highlight areas for possible change or improvement?
Sure, that sounds fantastic.
And what was that issue that you wanted to discuss?
Uh, yeah.
We were, you know, about the fencing?
Yeah.
That could be an Agenda Item.
Sure.
Could we narrow the discussion? Because this is gonna be, there's a table in there that talks about zoned, the use table, and the uses, et cetera. And we've identified a number of shortcomings along the way. I think it's important to devote the proper amount of time to, at least in the workshop, just to get, I mean, we may turn up things like we always have here with these things of, things we have to go research, but...
Here's what I'd like to do. I'd like to, because I'm pretty sure no one's gonna do that research, I would like for us to come together and determine what it is that we want to do. And so, I mean, I'd like to see that even happen as early as next Tuesday.
But see, I think like as far as like doing that, like nobody doing research, I think that when it comes to matters that pertain to the city, I do my research. And you know, and I, I do what I need to do. So, if we had the stuff, like if we went, if we started out with the first oldest outdated ordinances, and you started out with those first, here are the ones that may need, do you have any suggestions of this? So, we could go and do homework first, so we're not coming to the table just from the get-go. If it's kind of narrowed down since you've been doing this for a while, and you're, we're starting from the oldest ones, highlight it. We could do our notes and do our homework first.
I'm specifically talking about giving an overview so that, so that not only the rest of the council understands, when questions come in, this is the process, you know, I've told residents before, you can't really take these out of context. You have to read up and realize what section and what it's talking about. So, I would really like to do an overview.
Okay, so, not a work, because I'm hearing different things.
All right.
I've heard a workshop.
Well, that's what it would be. An overview would be a workshop so that there would be discussion, and we would be able to freely talk about it together, and that sort of an informational type, type thing. There are some things that we've discussed that need to be discussed specifically, so that could be in the Agenda Item. You can have a meeting and a workshop at the same time.
So, I would like, what I would like to consider is that we have it on a Saturday morning, that we do the planning and zoning first, and then we could do the meeting afterwards to approve anything or talk about anything that we need. The workshop first, and then the meeting.
I'd rather do the meeting than the workshop.
I'd rather it not be on a Saturday.
I agree with that.
I'm just saying because a lot of people, if you're doing it, a lot of people work. They have lives, they have kids, they have practices, they're cooking for their family, they're doing this. Like, if we are not flexible with our times and willing to make a sacrifice, you know, in the morning, people have lives throughout the week.
Our Tuesdays, I mean, my Tuesdays evenings are slated specifically for city meetings, and that's been, you know, the standard for a lot of years. So, that's where, that's where, I mean, I can flex every once in a while.
So, can we have it earlier on a Tuesday?
Um, earlier on a Tuesday? Yeah, I could do earlier on a Tuesday. I couldn't do before four o'clock.
Uh-huh, so five?
I could do a five on a Tuesday for a workshop and a meeting.
You, you, you're free, right?
I'd like to know which ordinances pertain to zoning and planning and zoning.
Well, that would be part of the, that would be part of the overview.
Was it all one fifty-five zoning code? You know...
Well, that's a huge one. That's, that's a big, it's like sixty pages long.
So, that is something we can go and study and then do an overview.
What I was suggesting was, is that a good starting point would be to go review the use tables that buy that. And that, to me, you know, that's gonna take up enough time.
The use table?
That's a big, that big table in there that tells you what you could do in the R1 versus what you could do in a multi-use, et cetera. And it'd be a great time to go through those line by line. But that's, there must be, there's about fifty pages.
Are we talking about the eleventh or eighteenth?
The eighteenth.
I need the eleven.
Of what, February?
And I'll stay here.
I need the eleven.
Are you, are you...
That's too much.
Are you wanting me to...
It's an overview, it's an overview. You know what I'm saying? I mean, we don't, we don't really have to do any homework to do it on the eleven. And I'm saying, like literally, I'll pull up the maps, show you the, you know, make sure that everybody understands where you can find these online. So, certainly bring your computer. And the way it is all lined out, what you can and cannot do in each zone. Why you want me to do that?
Because personally, honestly, you won't have any of your stuff ready before, before the end of the week, and we gotta put out an agenda the day after tomorrow.
There's nothing to be ready. It's hard there.
And the fact of the matter is, is this stuff comes, I mean, poor Sylvia was here typing up ordinances at four thirty this afternoon because we don't get stuff in on time. So, to sit here and...
Well, you know, and I think it's...
Throw our chest out and say, my God, we'll do it the next Tuesday. I mean, that just, I just don't believe it.
Okay, well, I mean...
You just want to, and it's gonna be something that you're gonna run.
Mm-hmm. As a P and Z meeting, a P and Z meeting and workshop, as an overview to inform and maybe even introduce to residents and council members what it looks like, how it all works, so that you'll have a bigger picture when we start talking about specifics, which I believe would then guide us to say, you know what, that's the part, there's a part that we need to revise.
I think we need to focus on certain areas of the ordinances, you know, that you want to focus on so we can be all well-bred on it.
You have, you have to have an understanding in a big picture before you start to isolate.
Okay.
Do you want to do that next week?
I would gladly do that next week.
Everybody good for two and eleven?
Could I just, just say one thing, please? So, we're gonna have an overview to present to the public what is acceptable, but then we're gonna also look at the stuff on how to change it. Don't you think we should just do a big presentation after we review the ordinances? Can't we like review the ordinances first, and then do what we need to do, and then present it to the public instead of causing more confusion?
I think...
Here's what everything is that we're changing it.
Yeah, but my point is that workshops are public anyway. So, if in fact a resident came and said, I don't really understand about this and such, it would be an opportunity to actually answer those questions.
I mean, what I hear you really trying to say is, is you want to come in and train, train the people at this table what the dead ordinance says.
Well, or just how it, how it's laid out, and where the zones are, and what they mean.
And that's not, I will say that that's not a bad thing. What, digging through that, which I've had to do since I've become mayor and answering daily questions, et cetera, is, it is, it is kind of complicated, and it would be good to make sure. So, if you don't feel, if you and you and you don't feel confident then about what's in there right now, having a class on, this is what it currently says, isn't bad. But when it gets, comes down to actually talking about what we're gonna go change and what we're gonna change it to, I believe we need to start with the use table, and that will take plenty of time to go off to...
I agree.
That's totally fine. I would like to do an overview on the eleven.
No, no, it's toward the end. It's...
That sound reasonable?
You know what, I told you five o'clock, and I have a meeting that day.
So, we can go back to six thirty?
You can still leave it there, and then I'll watch the video. I could see it on, I could see it on, on, I could look back at the meeting.
Would you be able to come?
When?
At, at six thirty, like...
Um, the meeting that I, that I have, it's in San Marcos, and it starts at six thirty.
Yeah, site, development standards. You said use sites.
That's on a Tuesday, right?
Mm-hmm. I could do Monday. I could even do Monday.
It's a big, looks like it's a cell panel.
The use table.
Because there's no preparation for this. I mean, I know this, this stuff.
But may I say something?
May I say something for myself? I think you need to give me some breather because you, I mean, you're talking minutes and minutes and minutes and in between, you know, doing a lot of, a lot of other stuff.
We've been meeting every, almost every week.
Very, 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 very. I have a very limited minutes to begin with.
Yeah.
Maybe, may I suggest maybe the following week?
I won't be here. I'll be in Mexico. I'll leave the 14th, so.
The city's closed on the 17th.
For President's Day.
So where do we come down on this? We're going to have a, a, a Lisa class on the 11th or not?
Y'all gonna have.
Yes, you can't be here, you can't be here.
I can live, I can be here.
What time?
Well.
I mean, I mean, if Sonia's doesn't.
You do it Wednesday?
You know, six thirty is, is, is typical. I prefer not Wednesday, either Monday or Tuesday, I can do it, Monday or Tuesday.
Thursday.
Monday or Tuesday.
We're talking about.
She said on Wednesday.
You want to do it?
If it's at five, I might be late, but I'll, I can be here.
I'd rather do six thirty. She was the only one who wanted five, so.
Six thirty on what day?
Yeah, but you have to think about Jared also.
Okay, so which day is best for you, Jared? Monday or Tuesday?
It makes no difference on that day. I'm not going to Houston.
What are we talking about? The 10th or 11th or 17th or 18th?
Correct.
He works on Monday, why don't we do some kind of something during the day?
Mayor, you want me here?
No, you don't want me here.
Monday, Tuesday.
Yeah, we're here today.
Starts with the lobby.
When do you get off?
Well, the job's finished. I mean, you know, it's different, it's all different.
Okay.
So where do we come down on? It's your meeting.
Monday or Tuesday. I'm, I'm giving, I'm going to, I'm going to turn it to.
Do you want to do it on the day you're here?
I'd be preferred for me.
Is that Monday for you?
Somebody said she could make Monday.
Monday to 10. Go.
Okay, what time?
Done.
The 10th at six thirty.
Yes, please.
I'll do it.
Oh, we can't do it like at five?
Go with it.
And, and.
And can we limit it to two hours?
Well, talk to, this is, this is going to be, this is going to be a Lisa show, so Lisa, you come in, prepare to go with the agenda and the whole ball of wax.
I want to use some of it.
Because this is a workshop, I think we need to give, give.
Will send me a agenda?
Sure.
And it needs to be by tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Yeah, by tomorrow.
I'll write it before I leave tonight.
And I'm going to make the proposal and I'm going to tell, this is, because this is a review of a current, of the current ordinances, the minutes requirement will be very limited. This is going to be.
Yeah, right.
The two-hour discussion and the light item on the minutes ought to be council discussed ordinance number done on. And that's about all we're going to put in there for that because Sylvia is right. Every time we have one of these meetings, it consumes a full day of her time to listen to the tape and try to get everything right in there, so.
So you agree just to review the table?
No, I'm saying she can go train us all on how to read the document.
Just do an introduction.
That's, that's going to spur the question.
When it comes time to actually start talking changes, I think we need to start at the table. Because that drives all the rest of the words or most of the words down. Okay, and then the only other thing is, is Mike wanted to go.
Oh, really?
Give us time to review our legal position on as a, to have a, what's that, contested case hearing.
To be a party in the contested case.
To be a party in the contested case hearing, you have to have a vested interest in the outflow and we need a legal decision is, is, does our ownership of ETJ count? I don't know.
Give me, what I, what I need is, is the notification of the, of the Edward Carroll proceeding and I, I mean, I can access everything through the state office of administrative hearings and from that point I can tell you where I think we go.
And the second thing is, is the second potential trigger of that would be the outflow runs into the river and we owe, we have annexed to the other side of the other bank. So maybe that, that is enough to trigger us as a impacted property owner. I don't know. Those are the two issues that, that need to get addressed. I'll send you the.
The farm property.
So, yeah, I don't, I don't think this gets too far into the weeds on this. What, what you're, what you're looking for is a very technical analysis that is probably going to require an expert report. If we're up against a timeline, I may just recommend a blanket intervention, which is simply, simply filing something. It doesn't mean we pursue something, but to determine.
The process for the TCEQ is that if we want to go be a partner, demand a contested case hearing, we have to be, we have to be a property owner that is impacted by the outflow. What I'm telling you is, it goes through our ETJ, I don't know whether that counts enough. If it runs into the river at the back of the bank, we do feel like, we don't own the river. We, we, we have annexed to the, so really our only owned property is on this side of the river. So, so those are the questions. And if we don't, there's no action to take. If it is, then, then we'll need to go, we may need to go submit our name as a.
Intervener.
Yes.
As a party.
And.
That's, that's what an interv- intervener is.
I don't know that I need the council's approval to do that, do I? Because all we're asking is to be, be party to the contested case hearing. I mean, it's mostly just notifications.
And then, and then what? I mean, I could, because I can, I can make that happen and then we can, we can determine later if there's any action.
Has it already been contested?
I, I just don't know if the timeline has passed.
No, it hasn't happened until the 3rd.
No, but you, you can be a party. You can be.
Well, if.
If you get this done, then put it on the next agenda.
No, no, not that. I'm saying, I think the time to intervene may have passed.
No, you can do it to hear it. You can do it to hear it. Trust me on that one. I'm just saying, there's already, there's already a party. We're not the only party.
All right. So with that in mind, we've got a meeting set for the 10th, Monday the 10th, at six thirty to do a planning and zoning workshop. And as we stand right now, we are not planning for a meeting on the 18th pending other information. And there we go. All right, yes.
One more, one more just agenda thing or just to get information or to talk about is procedure with people dumping in the city.
Thank you.
Procedure protocol for city dumping, procedure protocol for if it's in Guadalupe County, possible paperwork, if we have paperwork that citizens can fill out for illegal dumping in the city limits.
I'll, I'll put it on the future list.
Thank you.
All right. What else we got?
Anything.
Could we adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Four and O, adjourned and passes. We conclude at nine 12.